Good evening and welcome to the August 13, 2019, meeting of the Gilderlin School Board. For those in attendance, please silence your cell phones at this time, and we will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item on tonight's agenda, as always, is public comment number one: Do we have anyone? I see a sea of red seats, so no. All right then, we'll keep going on. At this time, we'll do the approval of the consent agenda items. That consists of two sets of minutes from meetings on July 2 and July 29, both 2019, the CSE and CPSE recommendations. We have a lengthy list of personnel action items, and the financials consisting of six reports. Can we get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Bargfréterigo. And second, Gloria, any questions or comments? Ben?
The teacher leaders stipends come from new ESSA money, right?
It's not new money, it's existing money. We've just, we've been permitted to utilize Title II funds in particular for that purpose.
Anything else? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? And that passes 6-2-0. Did I get the number right? All right, we're down a little, so. Next up on the agenda, we have various information items, starting with curriculum and instruction. So Damian?
Thank you. Included with your, or for your information is a copy of the New York State Education Department's Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education Framework, or CSR. CSR is intended to help education stakeholders create student-centered learning environments that affirm cultural identities, foster positive academic outcomes, develop students' abilities to connect across lines of difference, elevate historically marginalized voices, empower students as agents of social change, and contribute to individual student engagement, learning, growth, and achievement through the cultivation of critical thinking. The framework was designed to support education stakeholders in developing and implementing policies that educate all students effectively and equitably, as well as to provide appropriate supports and services to promote positive student outcomes. Historically, education debates have been polarized around this, with difference sometimes being viewed as individual deficit. The CSR frameworks aligns with and marks our journey forward and begins the evolution toward leveraging difference as an asset. The framework is grounded in four key principles, and they are welcoming and affirming environments, high expectations and rigorous instruction, inclusive curriculum and assessment, and ongoing professional learning. So it is there for your review.
Jim, can I ask a question? The recent issue of On Board featured that as one of the articles, and it mentioned in that article that each district is to appoint someone or select someone to be the point person for gathering materials or putting state materials in touch with individuals, parents, anyone who would like. Do we have someone?
We don't, we don't. That's been a conversation that we've had about, you know, how do we comply, number one, but number two, how do we do it effectively and serve students as best as we possibly can? A number of districts, I'm thinking Niskiun in particular, they appointed an equity officer last year who is charged with that role and that responsibility. So that's a topic of conversation for us as a school district and how we want to best serve that.
Do we have any idea, a timeframe for when we're going to make that decision?
Well, I think it's going to be a conversation for the next round of budget conversation. I don't think it's something that we can do right now unless we're to utilize.
Oh, okay. So this is a separate, okay. I just thought it could be incorporated into an existing position as a point person.
Well, it's.
At least temporarily, we need something.
Yeah, I mean, I guess temporarily, I would say I'm kind of doing it.
You're it.
Tag. Yeah, and it's been a focus of conversation with our curriculum cabinets as well, so, you know, we're reviewing curricula as well as identifying resources that are culturally in tune, I would say, and reflective of our student population, and making sure that our students see themselves and our work and the texts that we use and all those kinds of things, so.
I thought it might be an opportunity, maybe this year, to work with the PTAs or to get the PTAs. Because some of the materials are appropriate, I mean, for parents to get them to see some of the things that are on there.
Yeah.
Might be a way to reach out to the PTAs, to do a program maybe within the different schools.
Yeah. I know, it's also, you know, this very topic has been a conversation with each of our, in particular, at Gilderlin and Linwood and Altamont, where their ESSA data is also speaking to this and indicating that they have minority populations that are not achieving at the same level.
Right.
There are some gaps that are identified there, so from a goal-setting perspective, that's been a topic of conversation for them. They, in fact, well, really, all of our buildings that had what's called a Level One on the ESSA data in any category, they're now required to complete what's called a Level One Assessment, and they've done that. That Level One Assessment now also has to factor into our application for federal dollars, so, which is due at the end of this month, and working on it currently. And when we submit for that, we also have to assure that the buildings that have Level Ones have completed these Level One Assessments. They have to remain on file, they are certainly up for audit if that ever comes around for Title One in particular. So, you know, the work around the CSR that was just shared with you, I think, is another level of information for us to be aligning our work, thinking about, you know, next steps, informing the community, all those kinds of things, but it's a big topic.
It is, it's huge, but it's so, so important.
Yeah. Okay. My second item, I just wanted to give you a brief update. This, similar to most summers, has been very active with curriculum development revisions and updates. In total, we facilitated 59 summer curriculum projects whereby teams of administrators and teachers collaborated to provide rich learning experiences for our students. Topics ranged from implementation of our new elementary math program to school-to-work program upgrades, to the creation of new high school electives, to comprehensible input strategies for world language courses. And I do, of course, want to thank the many teachers and our instructional administrators who really worked tirelessly this summer. You know, sometimes there's this belief that schools shut down during the summer, and I can adamantly oppose that point of view. We certainly do not shut down, and there is a lot of activity and a lot of work that occurs during the summer months.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Damian? All right, we'll keep moving on with the agenda. Next up, we have information items with the superintendent's report, three items to cover.
Continuing with the theme of summer, this week marks the end of our sixth year taking part of the regional summer school program. This year, again, the program was held at Mohanison High School. We had 69 students from Gilderlin in grades six through 12, and we're very appreciative of the work at the BOSIs and Mohanison to provide this opportunity for our students. Locally, right here in Gilderlin, this week also marks the conclusion of our extended year program for students with disabilities at Gilderlin Elementary School. And then we also host the BOSIs Extended Year Program for the region at Westmore Elementary School, which we'll wrap up at the end of this week. And then already completed is a three-week English as a New Language Program at Gilderlin Elementary School, always well-attended and very popular. So I want to thank all the faculty and staff who contributed to these programs. They have a very short summer, but they do amazing work, and the kids have a great time, so it's really a wonderful program. And Steve Wolf was our extended summer school principal for the first time, and he did a fantastic job, so we want to congratulate him and welcome to the world of administration, Steve. Also, this week, we have camp invention at Fernsworth Middle School. 221 campers are inventing things. If you have some time and you want to swing by, it's amazing to watch them turn piles of stuff into meaningful creations, so it's a lot of fun.
What are the hours of that?
Nine to three, I think.
Okay, because Kelly, I know it said something about three, and I thought, that sounds like it's really late, but that's terrific.
It's a full-day program, all five days. And then on Friday, they do their kind of gallery walk, so the work is done, and the students will talk about what they've created and what they've learned, so it's fun. And then we also are celebrated, or have celebrated, another successful season with our butterfly station. Release day was Thursday, August 8, so very busy summer and great work done all the way around. My next item, and actually, you have a nice green sheet in front of you, these are proposed program reports for the upcoming year, so, plus some other main events that are important in the calendar. But I want to just talk through a little bit some of the ideas that are here for the actual reports that we do, and seek your feedback and other suggestions if you have them. The first program report, we're looking at September 17, which is our first meeting once school begins, and we want to focus on our work with the instructional coaching. We spent all last year doing district-wide training. We had our two coaches from Linwood work with a team from all of the other elementary buildings for many days each, like 10 days each, it was a lot.
It was a long spring.
And they did some tremendous work. We really feel like you need to hear about the work they did, the progress they made, and kind of what is next. So we want to kick off the fall with that. October 15 is our employee recognition ceremony. The 29th, it doesn't seem possible, but we'll already be seeking public input for the 2021 budget. And with that evening, we also would like to present some more information to the board about the Every Student Succeeds Act, because that is wide-reaching, both in terms of the work we're doing around equity, but it has budgeting implications, and it has huge reporting implications, and there are new accountability implications. So it will shape work top to bottom across the organization, so we felt like, early in the year, you would want to know kind of what that work is all about. In November, we'd like to propose, it's called a program report, but it's like a mini-program report, on our Career and Technical Education Program. You've heard in bits and pieces the work of Joan McGrath and her team to expand our school-to-work programming, and later tonight, you're going to be asked to approve four or five CTE programs for credit through SED. They're doing amazing things, and I know this has been a priority for the board, so we'd like to bring in Joan and some students to talk about what the school-to-work program has become and the opportunities that it's afforded students. I mean, one tidbit, I think I sent you a photo earlier in the summer of our unbelievable garden out behind the high school. School-to-work students came up with the idea, did the work, of course Cliff and his crew helped, but it's flourishing and it's a great opportunity to kind of see what's up with that program. So that's November, and then December 10, two topics. One is to hear from the board about some direction for the budget, and then we are anticipating by that point to have a more formal report around our school start time work, also, which has potential budget implications. So that's why we have really front-loaded the program reports for this year. The balance of the year is kind of open, but you very well know what we talk about during that time. And we don't put them on this calendar, but as part of the budget development process, Neil starts around in November with what we call those little budget vignettes. We talked about doing not only those financial vignettes, but also programmatic ones as well that may come up later in the budget development process. So not a full-blown report, but maybe three or four slides on a topic that's going to be critical in the budget development process. And not quite sure where all those will fit in at this point. But these are for your review. Feedback, suggestions, questions, comments? Barbara?
I just have a question on whether or not, I don't know if you could combine it with the Career and Technical Education, but how many students do we have going to BOSIs taking advantage of the multitude of programs that they had over there? And how maybe over the last five years, that has changed, or if it hasn't changed? And, you know, there's this push now for people to learn trades and to do things that were going to be employed. So I don't know if you can combine the two, it doesn't have to be really long, but, you know, what kinds of programs are available there? How many of our kids are taking advantage of it? I know from CAD/CAM to, you know, auto mechanics to heavy machinery and so.
We absolutely have that data. We could put together, you know, a summary of it once the school year gets rolling and kind of shakes out who actually is going and so on, but it's easily done.
Doesn't have to be a program report, just a Friday update or something.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Do these seem to capture?
I think it's wise to put the ones that are going to have budgetary early, so we've got to make those decisions, otherwise we're going to lose another year waiting, so I think it's wise.
We tend, now, let me knock on wood, we tend to be ever so slightly less pressured for time in the fall.
Yeah, yeah.
Now watch, I just jinxed this, but in terms of, you know, having an opportunity to discuss and reflect, it seems better in.
And if something does come up, we have some flexibility here to stick it in if we need to.
Right. Okay, now what everyone has been waiting for, the opening of school. Lots of things going on, but I'll just remind you of a couple of the highlights. Tuesday, September 3, is opening day for staff, you are all invited. We begin at 7:30 at the high school with coffee and refreshments, and then we will gather in the auditorium. We did that for the first time last year and felt that the venue was a lot more comfortable. The technology was awesome, thank you, Andy. So we're going to do that again, even though we're cozy, we fill the room. So board members, you will have front row seats, so we will reserve a couple of spots for you. That begins, the program begins at 8:00, we usually wrap up about 9:15, so it's not a tremendously long program, but it's very, it's always nice to see everybody come back. We do.
People are encouraged to bring food for the food pantry, too.
Thank you, yes. Every year, we do.
And I always forget, which is why I'm trying.
Yes. Every year, we work with Susan Hennessy and the Gilderlin Food Pantry. This year, there is a shortage of canned fruit, so this is what we are focusing on, so bring your fruit, and it will be very much appreciated. We also do some special kindergarten welcomes in our elementary schools. They invite our new kindergarten students to meet with their teachers, drop off supplies, they go on a little school bus. And each building has a slight variation on a theme, so they will be sending out information to their incoming kindergarten students. Actually, it's on its way, because we're knocking on the door here. We have some orientations going on at the middle school for our sixth graders, that's Wednesday, September 4, from 8:45 to 10:00 in the morning. And then for new seventh and eighth grade students, that orientation is Wednesday, August 28, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. At the high school, orientation for ninth graders and other new students is Wednesday, September 4, from 7:30 to 11:15. And then the big day, first day of school, K-12, Thursday, September 5. Favorite day of the year. Questions? All right, thank you.
So everybody is circling Thursday, September 5 on their calendar right now, big red letters there. It's always an exciting time for students, teachers, and everyone else in the district, so that's good. Next up, we have board president information, and I'm going to try to present this in two parts, and then we'll have discussion certainly. I guess the first part is, we're down a board member because Christine Hayes stepped down on August 1. She'd been on the board for seven years, three years as board president, and just for the first part, I wanted to recognize Christine for her service, and I think we're going to do that again at another time with a certificate, but just wanted the public to know what a great board member she was. And I just, getting to know her for the past couple of years, I found her to be extremely smart, very thoughtful, extremely fair, very professional at the meetings. I've been not really joking around how I went back and looked at some of her meetings on YouTube, because she ran them so well. So the public was really very well-served by Christine, and with all of that professionalism on her part, she's also just a really great person. So we'll definitely miss her, but big shoes to fill, but we have to fill them. So tonight, we're a six-member board, but usually we're an eight, or at this time, we're an eight-member board, and we have to get to nine members, so that's what we'll be discussing tonight. So the second part of the comments are that we need to appoint or elect a board member to get back to nine. We're in the midst of a 90-day window right now to do just that. If we do an election route, of course, there's costs involved in that, and we've discussed that in past situations when this has happened, and the past practice has generally been to appoint. There's two years left in the term, but the appointment or election, however it ends up going, would only be to fill out the remainder of this year for the term. So that's kind of where we are, and tonight, I think we talk about process and timeline so we can make sure to get back to nine members, and especially with a 90-day period, which expires November 1, I think you said.
Yes.
So we've got plenty of time.
About, about, I didn't count.
Plenty of time, but I will open that up for discussion now, unless, did you want to add anything?
No, not at this point. I mean, we can hear what the folks have to say and go further.
Yeah, I don't remember how we publicized, but I know, Ben, you were part of a group, weren't you, that came and interviewed for the last time we had an opening? And we asked different questions of the people who were there, and that seemed to work.
Pretty well. We typically do a press release and then post to all of our various platforms to get word out that there's a vacancy. That's what we've done in the past.
And then, and then the board.
We have to submit a letter.
Yes, a letter of interest.
And then the board.
Resign.
And then we had that meeting where everybody came, we got to interview people, talk to them.
Yeah.
It seemed to work very well.
Yeah.
It seemed fair, because everybody had, in the community, had an opportunity to step forward if they chose.
Okay.
Mark?
You know, that they, that practice has served us very, very well, and I think we should just follow what we did before.
I can't see any reason to spend $22,000 on an election when we can get the same people and talk to them and have them talk to us without spending that kind of money.
Now, this person would be one year.
Right.
Until. Until the election. And then in the election, they would be, we would be electing a person to finish the second year of Christine's term?
Finish the remainder.
It just would be one.
Remainder would be one year.
Yes, one year and a couple of months.
Whoever came the fourth person.
We'll get her.
Okay.
Anything else?
Well, I'll just throw it out there, we don't have to hold a meeting greet if we have someone in mind either, because I know last time, we were all, we already kind of picked Alan. By the time we had that meeting, we just wanted to go through that process, so I'll just throw out there that you don't have to have a meeting greet. The policy says we can just appoint someone, so if someone wanted to call Kathy Barber or something like that, you could just grab someone.
Well, I think we went, we had that discussion the last time, and I think we came to the conclusion that we wanted to do it the other way, to give an opportunity for other people to step forward, because we're always looking to bring people in.
Yeah.
And it's a great chance to try it for one year, you know? It's not like, I'm committing to three, you might get somebody who's willing.
Yeah, and without doing the campaigning, which Kelly knows.
All that.
Yeah, is a lot of.
Money.
Just, you know, we talk to them, we see them, they understand what their position is, what the position is. I think it worked out.
I'm definitely on the side of exposing, like, putting it out to the public, finding out there may be people outside of our network or people that are interested that we don't know, so I'm firmly on that side. See what happens. How many, how many names we get, I suppose?
I think we had about six or seven.
That would determine. You had a nice, you really did, it was very interesting.
And that would determine what the next step is.
Yeah.
Well, I wasn't appointed at that time.
No, I wasn't appointed at that time.
But you showed interest.
Then you ran, you got known. Grease the wheels, though.
Yes, began the process.
All right, so I'm hearing that we will definitely post vacancy, and then we want to do letters of interest, so anyone in the public interested, submit letters of interest to District Office by what would be a good date.
We can look at our timeline last time.
We'll pull up all this stuff from last time.
See how it played out.
And we probably, depending on how many individuals express interest, we probably will need to set aside a, an evening.
Mm-hmm.
So if that's the case, I can work with Linda tomorrow in Aubrey, and we can get the ball rolling right away.
Okay. And then ideally, we could appoint at one of the October meetings, preferably the first one.
That would be great.
Yeah, it's possible.
That would be great.
Yeah, that would be good. We don't, we certainly want to get them in as soon as we can.
Right, yeah.
And then they also get a feeling for the board before we get into the budget, they can begin to see processes.
Yes. All right. And we don't need a motion or anything on that, right? We just start the process now. All right, good. So the call is out to the public. Anyone interested, please contact District Office for your letter of interest to fill out the ninth board position, and it would just be for this school year, 2000, what are we, 2019 to 2020? Wow.
Until the budget vote.
And until the budget vote in May.
Yeah, it's not, someday in May, actually.
Yep. All right. Okay, great. I think we're in good shape on that. Next up on the agenda, we have, this is where Neil goes to work quite a bit here.
Yeah.
We have a lengthy list of action items for school business management, and I'll turn it over to you right away then, Neil.
Thanks, Neil. First item this evening is a resolution to approve the summer school classroom rental agreement with capital region BOSIs.
All right, motion to approve the agreement. Bargfréterigo, second, Gloria. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Did I get the number right? Whoops, sorry, 6-0.
It'll stay 6.
I know, I even wrote it down. I'll probably still say 7. All right, back to Neil.
Okay. Next item is a resolution to approve the one-year extension of the classroom rental agreement with Living Resources to provide an after-school program for students with disabilities.
So can we have a motion to approve? Ben, second. Judy, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries 6-0.
Next is a resolution to approve the final 2018-19 contract for BOSIs services as required by education law in order for BOSIs aid to be paid.
And can we have a motion to approve? Gloria, second. Ben, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And motion carries 6-0.
Next is a resolution to approve an agreement to jointly operate a combined ice hockey team with and for students from the Scotia-Glenville Central School District, Mohanison Central School District, Shellmont Central School District, Forestville Central School District, and Gilderlin Central School District for the 2019-20 school year.
And can we get a motion to approve the ice hockey cooperative agreement? Barbara, and second, Judy, any questions or comments?
Do they play games?
Yes, so they're suburban council team, but there aren't, most schools cannot muster enough students to form their own team, so there's a lot of combined teams out there. Shaker and Colony do one.
Okay, it just sounded like there were so many schools, I didn't know if there were more schools to.
Is it private school one?
Yeah, there's other schools.
Yeah, so this is, we're one of the larger ones with five districts, but others have two or three schools, but allows them to at least provide an opportunity for their students interested in hockey to have a competitive experience at the high school level. And like I said, there are a number of schools in the surrounding area that have joined together for the same reasons, so that teams can play each other.
Okay. It just sounded like there were so many schools in ours that I wasn't sure there were more schools.
Yes, yeah, but some of these schools, you know, it's one, two, or three students, and that's the interest that they have, so by combining them together, and some of the larger, more metropolitan, you know, colonies, it's just the two schools, because they can get enough students from those populations.
I think it's great.
Yeah, it's great, yeah.
Did it start out with just Mohan and Gilderlin at first, and then more have come along?
I can't remember the history, we've been doing this for a while. Exactly how many schools started with the particular, I know there were several, I can't remember the exact number, but.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries 6-0. I think we're going to put all these service agreements together?
Yes.
Okay.
So we have a number of service agreements, well, I'll put under one resolution. The first is with CDB Connections. The first is with CDB Connections and Center for Disability Services, the Langdon School, Wherwinds of Saratoga, Hillcrest Academy, Learn Well, Living Resources Corporation, Music Speaks Services, the New England Center for Children, Northern Rivers Family Services, and also for the Neil Hellman School, St. Catherine's for both the summer of 2019 and the 2019-20 school year, Sign Language Interpreter Services, and South Colony Central School District. And most of these programs are to serve students with disabilities or to serve students with other types of needs.
All right, can we get a motion to approve all service agreements? Judy, second. Kelly, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries six, nothing.
Next is a resolution to award the bits for private transportation services for various school locations, serving private parochial students or students with disabilities for the 2019-20 school year. And the recommendation is to award to the lowest responsible bidders meeting specifications as identified in your materials.
All right, motion to approve the transportation service bits. Judy, second. Ben, any questions or comments?
Neil, this is, was this where Danielle put a bunch of feelers out and then picked which routes were going to be the most beneficial to contract out?
Yes, so there's, we've been doing this for several years now, but what we're able to do is first look at what routes we're best able to accommodate with our staff and our buses, and then look at those areas that don't fit as well. And a lot of them are private parochial schools that are outside of the boundaries of the district, or for students with disabilities, again, outside the district. Those are our harder ones to accomplish. So we do do some of those, depending on where the student's located and the school's located. We may transport them on our own school buses, but then other ones, we have learned that it is more economically feasible to contract them out. And you'll see from the analysis here, we put some routes, route options out there for carriers. One carrier came back and actually put together some routes on their own, which were beneficial to the school district in terms of how they mapped out multiple school locations. And you'll see some of those awards recommended as well. So it does benefit the district to have that kind of opportunity for others to bid on the routes, and also to take a look at trying to find an effective way for them to do that, which also benefits the school district.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries six, nothing.
Next is the approval of an agreement with Hudson Valley Community College to make available college and high school courses for students during the upcoming school year.
Motion to approve the agreement with Hudson Valley. Barb, second. Judy, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six, zero.
Next is an agreement with Western Governors University College for Gilderlin Central School District to accept students for internship and practicum experience.
And can we get a motion to approve the internship agreement? Kelly, second. Gloria, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And motion carries six, zero.
Next is a resolution for the board to approve prices for school lunch and breakfast programs for the 2019-20 school year. And I'm pleased to announce that there will be no increases in prices recommended. So elementary will remain at $1.95 for breakfast and $2.80 for lunch. Middle school, $1.95 for breakfast and $3.05 for lunch. And high school, $2.50 for breakfast and $3.05 for lunch.
Motion to approve the school breakfast and lunch prices. Judy, second. Kelly, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries six, zero.
Next is a resolution to eradicate poison ivy located on athletic fields and playgrounds at Gilderlin High School, Farnsworth Middle School, Gilderlin Elementary, Lynnwood Elementary, Westmore Elementary, Altima Elementary, and the grounds behind the transportation department. And that would be done through an emergency application of pesticide to protect public health in accordance with Education Law Section 409-K.
And motion to approve pesticide application for poison ivy. Ben, second. Judy, any questions or comments other than it's good to get rid of poison ivy?
Except they don't have any at Pine Bush?
No, no, they do not.
Ooh, okay, all right.
That's good.
So if we don't need to apply it, we won't, and that's one of the schools that we don't have an issue with.
This is something that we have to approve.
We have done this pretty regularly. In these particular areas, they continue to have growth of poison ivy in certain spots on the school grounds. And again, with students coming back, staff coming back in a few weeks, we want to make sure that that doesn't become an issue for students, staff, or visitors to our schools.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six, zero.
Next is a resolution to approve general fund transfers, as noted in your materials, for a grand total of $230,864.
And motion to approve the general fund transfers. Gloria, second. Judy, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries six, zero.
Okay, next we have a resolution to confirm the tax rolls and authorize the tax levy. So you will see in your materials, we have calculated tax rates based on assessed value information that we received from the various towns, and then applied that to our tax levy, working it through a formula by New York State that equally apportions the tax levy across the four towns in our school district. What's being recommended is that we utilize the tax rates as follows. Gilderlin, Town of Gilderlin residents, $16.76 per thousand. Bethlehem residents, $17.64 per thousand. New Scotland, $18.22 per thousand. And Knox, $29.93 per thousand. In terms of the library, which we are also approving as the school district's public library, Town of Gilderlin residents would pay $0.89 per thousand. Bethlehem would be $0.94 per thousand. New Scotland would be $0.97 per thousand. And Knox would be $1.59 per thousand. These rates are slightly higher than what was estimated at the time of the budget vote. At that time, we were working with information that the town had shared about prospective assessments within the Town of Gilderlin. We also get some of that information from other towns as well. But as you know, as we go through the process, those numbers get adjusted. There's a small claims review process that people can enter into where assessments get adjusted. We also have equalization rates that are set by the state. So the level of assessed value the state determines for each town varies as well, and if it goes down, then that town will receive a greater share. So those changes, we cannot anticipate when we set the estimated tax rates in our materials to go to voters, but we do know that information at this point in time. So the recommendation is to adopt those rates, as mentioned.
All right, can we get a motion to approve the resolution to confirm tax rolls and authorize the tax levy? Judy, second. Kelly, any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six, zero.
Okay, and now we have another motion concerning the tax warrant that is predicated on the action that you just took. So basically, what this talks about is for each town, what the total school tax levy and library tax levy is to be collected for each town, and what the collection period is, which is September 1st, 2019 through October 31st, 2019. And there is a penalty period after the first 30 days that will go into effect.
All right, can we get a motion concerning the tax warrant to approve? Barb, and a second. Judy, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries six, nothing, and we need five signatures on that at the conclusion of the meeting?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And then finally, this evening is a resolution to authorize, it's an authorization to fund the tax surcharge reserve in the amount of unassigned fund balance exceeding 4% of the 2019-20 voter-adopted budget pursuant to Section 1318 of the real property tax law. So we're in a position with the reevaluation in Town of Gilderlin in particular, where we've received a large number of tax assessment challenges, either in small, that have been filed in small claims court or Supreme Court. We're now up to 215 properties within this, seeking reductions in taxes of over $5.5 million. That's what's being asked for. That's not what necessarily will be granted, but it's based on the current assessment, and then what the taxpayer has said, they think the assessment should be and what they're seeking in terms of a reduction. So since it's been 15 years since the town has done a reevaluation, it's not surprising that we have a lot of these claims. But it's also an opportunity that is, we have extra fund balance or surplus money above the 4% that we're legally allowed to keep, that we can put that toward a future known expense, and we certainly will have some claims to pay out of those that have been filed. So this is an opportunity to do that. There's also a regulatory issue, which basically, this is our opportunity to put money into a tax surcharge reserve. It has to coincide with the year that the tax challenges are made. So they're being made in the 2019-20 school year. This is our opportunity to put money aside for all claims that may get settled as a result of those being filed this year, even though settlement may occur in future years, particularly with commercial properties. That will allow us to put some money aside to help offset those claims when they become due. Little savings account, if you will, for that purpose.
And if we don't use it, can we put it, like, into the bond? What can we do with it?
No, not directly. So what will happen is if, at the end of four years, if it hasn't been exhausted, all the claims haven't been exhausted, or whatever point, if they're exhausted, then we can close the reserve. You're required to reclose the reserve after four years, as long as all claims are resolved. If there's still some outstanding, you can keep it open longer at that. But at that time, if there's any excess balance, there is an opportunity, once that timeline has lapsed, to take that money and reappropriate it to another reserve.
Thank you.
Okay, can we get a motion to approve the appropriation to reserve funds? Gloria, second. Ben, any other questions or comments on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six, zero. And that's it, right, Neil?
That's it.
I didn't get to use my gavel on you. I thought for sure I was going to break it out there.
Trying to, trying to keep pace here to make sure I didn't fall behind.
And you also got six, nothing on all of them.
Yes, that's good. All right, that was the first part of that section. We have a second part of action items and two points of information for superintendent action.
All right, the first item is a resolution to approve an accepted grant. This is a grant from the American, Italian-American community on education. It's in the amount of $3,000. This is at least the third year where we have been awarded this grant, and it's for the purchase of supplies and materials to support our Italian program. The only catch is that we have to join the organization for a $100 membership fee, and we have to spend the money by December 31st, 2019. By policy, the board has to approve any grant over $1,000, so that's why we're here tonight.
It's not too hard to do.
Yes.
Okay, could we have a motion to approve the grant proposal? Barb, second. Judy, any comments, questions, discussion?
Great. You say we won this, this is the third year?
I think it's the third.
Is it, is it the same amount every year?
I think so.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six, two, zero.
My second item is the approval of four career and technical education programs. The State Education Department has a process by which CTE programs, as they're known, are approved through a fairly, very rigorous process that includes a self-review and input from experts in the field and so on. In order for these to be submitted to the state, both the superintendent and the board have to sign off on them. You have the materials in your, in your, you have your materials in the portal today. We looked at these back in July as an information item, so we're getting ready to submit in order to get the seal of approval.
Do you want me, did you have a question? Oh, okay, go ahead. Barb?
How does this accounting course differ from the one that we have had at the high school for many years?
I don't know that it does necessarily, and we've got Shannon here to jump in. It's more about recognizing the breadth of the program according to the standards that SED has for accounting. So there may be minor changes in the curriculum, but this is all about the rigor of the program in establishing that students who participate in the program get a program that will push the limits for them. Did I miss anything, Shannon?
No. Thank you.
All right, can we get a motion to approve the four CTE programs of accounting, business management, entrepreneurship, and marketing? Gloria, second. Kelly, any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six, nothing.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Next up on the agenda are the board committee reports. And being a good former elementary teacher, I put them in alphabetical order, of course. So the first I have down for audit, and Neil, I made a note that we have a meeting scheduled for 8:00 a.m. on Monday, September 23rd, to review the annual financial statement. I didn't know if you wanted to add anything to that?
Nope, that's, that's the correct meeting day and time, and the purpose is to review the annual independent audit. So the audit committee gets the first crack at that with our auditors.
Great, all right. Next up, business practices.
We have no meeting scheduled yet.
No meeting scheduled, all right. How about communications?
No meeting scheduled.
All right.
No, there's, who has September 18th? There's a meeting scheduled for September 18th for one of them, 8:00 at the district office.
Really?
Yeah, I have it written on my calendar.
It's the tentative business practices.
Oh, tentative, yeah.
Okay. I just saw it today on my calendar.
What's this? All right.
Okay.
And policy?
No meeting yet.
Okay.
Oh, Barb, come on.
All of those committees will be meeting, though. It's just a matter of when. All right, and at this point, we come to public comment number two, and seeing no one, we will move right on to board issues, ideas, and sharing. So we'll open up the floor to anyone. Gloria?
Well, at the last organizational meeting, I tried to participate with the internet connection. We tried it out in the morning, it worked perfectly, but it was not working very well during that meeting. So I was having a very difficult time to fully participate in the discussion. So I'd like to share at this time two things regarding that meeting that pertain specifically to the discussion and the action the board took regarding the handbook, the board handbook. First, I'd like to remind the board that it tasked the communications committee two years, almost two years ago now, to develop a board handbook for two reasons, to help new board members to get up to speed quickly, and also to standardize some of the activities and provide some guidance to us as we move through the year. That was the task given to the communications committee. So for almost two years, the communications committee worked on this, and a majority of And a majority of the board that sat at the organizational meeting, a majority of the members, sat on that committee. We also met once a month. The committee reported to the board every month what was being discussed and asked for input throughout the process. Once we had a first draft ready, the committee asked the board to go through each section again. We went through it, one section per month, to provide comments and suggestions. I have to say that there were few comments or suggestions made throughout the year of that first draft. Then, once the draft was reviewed and accepted by the board, the board was provided the binder, which you got, which we put the dividers in, in a kind of final form. But at that last meeting, I did make the suggestion, and the committee agreed, that the board would use this year, this coming school year, to do a final review, to go section by section, month by month, again. And the board agreed that that would be what we would do. So in listening to the meeting, the organizational meeting, as it went on, I found the comments made by some board members at the last meeting very troublesome. Using words like "a sword hanging over our head" or "members having many concerns," all of a sudden were used. Yet no concerns had been raised during the almost two years that we worked on this. In fact, twice during the year, the handbook was actually cited and used to clarify two troublesome areas, making sure that emails got responses, which we were having difficulty with, and managing the public comment section, which was another little issue that had come up. I think that the action of the board to suspend the handbook was very disrespectful of the communications committee's work. All of us here serve on one, most of us, two committees, so we know how much time and energy that committee work takes. The communications committee used the best practices promoted by NISBA. We worked many hours to complete the task that this board gave to the committee, and I do not believe that the rest, the board itself, did its due diligence throughout the almost two years of the project. The second and final thing I'd like to say is that I found the remarks by Mr. Haran particularly disrespectful of the committee's work. Mr. Haran made the remark that if it were up to him, he would throw the whole thing out. To me, your remarks, Tim, were dismissive and disrespectful of your fellow board members. I had personally asked Mr. Haran, since he was new to the board when we began creating the handbook, to give us his feedback as to what was helpful and what needed to be deleted or changed, and I do not feel he made that effort to do that throughout the process. And then I heard that dismissive remark. In the recent addition of the Altima Enterprise, Seema Rivera, our new president, spoke about the importance of communicating in a respectful way. I do not feel that the discussion at the last meeting was respectful of the work of the communications committee. But I thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any questions, comments, discussions? I think it would be worthy of more discussion. I think it would be better to have everybody here for it, since we're down a few people. I accept your comments and what you have to say, and I will just respectfully disagree with them at this time and leave it at that. Anything else?
Comment about something else?
Sure.
On a totally different note, but I had the opportunity twice to go to the middle school for different programs during the summer. I went to the Birds of Prey, which was really well attended by, looked like a lot of grandparents with young grandchildren, and it was wonderful. And then I went to the Butterfly Release, which I had never done. And it was also, just the kids were so excited, it was really a good thing to see as a board member. We need to see things like that, because too often you get bogged down with other things. But just to watch them watching, you know, they're all excited like kids are, it was very good. So I appreciate the, what's available to students in the summer. And I hope to get to the middle school in the next couple of days and see the invention, what is it?
Camp invention.
Camp invention, yes.
As we've heard, our buildings are very busy, even in July and August, that's for sure. Barbara?
I also want to thank the administration for allowing the girls' basketball program, the use of some gym time this summer. It is so worthwhile to build our programs, and I just, to everyone involved, thank you. A big thank you.
Yeah, that worked out very well, that solution and everything, so very good. Ben?
I think it might be worthwhile to, at a later date, maybe when we have more board members, revisit the roles of each of the committees. The Policy Review Committee and the Audit Committee are, as you all know, mandated by the state, and so they have a pretty clear mandate of what they're doing. But business practices is kind of a very broad label. Communications Committee is a very vague label, considering that we've discussed visioning there and created a handbook and created this self-evaluation for the board, and we do all the budget stuff. And so, you know, I think it might be worthwhile to revisit the roles of each of those committees. Maybe there's an opportunity to consolidate, maybe there's an opportunity to create a new committee for some of those more miscellaneous tasks, just so that, you know, like Gloria's saying, there's not this thing where a committee's working on a project that might not be its responsibility and all for naught. So, thank you.
Okay.
We might consider something like at-large committees, that just meet for a short period of time.
Ad-hoc.
Ad-hoc, I mean, at-large. Ad-hoc committees, rather than, you know, these are standing committees, so we could limit there, and then have ad-hoc ones that just do specific things for a certain period of time.
Right. But for that kind of thing, I think you would need a more definite label for the role, because it is very easy to say, well, we have a communications committee, it's meeting next week, let's have them talking about it. You know, not that I'm saying any committee's overworked or anything, I'm just saying that it might help with situations like this, where it's much more clear when we create a committee for a task, that the board's kind of invested than if a committee's just working on something on the side for a year.
Is that something we would need to get on the agenda for a future meeting? Or how would we address that or handle that?
Actually, our committees are in policy. So it could be something the policy committee would begin the conversation, but would need to seek input from the whole board on that. But that's, I think, I mean, they're spelled out there. I think there's also a provision for ad-hoc committees that have a defined purpose and timeline and so on.
All right. Sounds like a good idea, so I'll keep mentioning it if we don't get to it, which sometimes happens. All right. Anything else? All right. At this time, we need a motion to return to executive session to discuss issues relating to proposed litigation strategy. Barb Frederigo, the motion, and second. Kelly? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six, nothing. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Just doing her job.
Take a breath? You have to. Make sure it's in. Where do I want the buffalo? It's got really in policy.